Call to order the regular board meeting that's noticed and posted for October the 25th, 2022, 10:00 a.m. in the Board of Supervisors hearing room. It is now 10:15. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion and possible action. And please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and justice for
Thank you, you may be seated. The order or deletion of any item on this agenda is subject to modification at the meeting. And the Board may vote to recess into an executive session for the purpose of obtaining legal advice from the Board's attorney at any, on any matter listed on the agenda pursuant to ARS I begin again with the roll calls, District One.
Crosby is still here.
District Two Supervisor English is present, District Three.
Supervisor Judd is here.
We have a complete board. Members of the public may attend this meeting by Microsoft Teams computer or mobile app or by phone by calling 602-609-7513 or 888-680-6714. Conference ID is 286-852-584-POUND. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call 520-432-9200 for direction. The Board may permit public comment during the discussion of any items on the agenda. And to speak to an agenda item or during the call to the public, complete and return the speaker request form to the clerk of the board prior to the start of the meeting. Note that some attachments may be updated after the agenda is published. And this means that some presentation materials displayed at the board meeting may differ slightly from the attached version. We have begun the call to the public. I do have one person who wish to be acknowledged during the call to the public, Jennifer Druckmann. Are you online? It says here that you may be in person. Jennifer Druckmann, are you online? Okay, we will move on. Call to the public. I have others, people who wish to speak, but it's on an agenda item, so we'll move on. The consent agenda is items one through three. Do I have a motion?
Go ahead, Madam Judd.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve consent agenda items one through three.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and so ordered. We go on to item one through three. Four is a public hearing. So on a public hearing, we are asked to adopt zoning ordinance 2221. So could we begin with a motion on the floor so that we can have the community development explanation, please?
Madam Chair, I move we adopt zoning ordinance 22-21 to rezone 21 parcels located in the Babakamari from our 36 residential, one dwelling per 36,000 square feet to RU2 rural, one dwelling per two acres to RU4 rural, one dwelling per four acres pursuant to a county initiated request.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, so I will open the public hearing so that you can explain to us what you're asking for us to do. Thanks, Dan.
Sure. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is a county initiated request with property owner permission to downzone or revert the zoning of 21 parcels located in the Babakamari area. This will remove a condition of rezoning requiring a subdivision plat. The parcels were rezoned in 2006 and 2007 with a condition requiring a subdivision plat before permits will be issued. Since then, no subdivision plats have been submitted and the area has not developed as intended. If I could advance this or not. Staff mailed letters to all the property owners in the Babakamari that own property with this conditional zoning on it, providing them the opportunity to participated in this rezoning to remove that condition. Twenty-one of the 37 property owners have decided to participate in this reversion of zoning back to RU4. The Babakamari is located north of the city of Service and near the Whetstone area. Over to the next slide. This, the areas highlighted or outlined in blue are the properties that are participating in this rezoning. The this was heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission because there was not a reversion clause that was placed on this, so we did, we, we, it is required by state law to get property owners permission to rezone the part, the parcels. So the Planning and Zoning Commission did hear this request. And at their October 12th meeting, and unanimously recommended approval to the Board of Supervisors. And obviously staff does recommend approval as well. I can answer any questions you have.
Okay, Board, do you have any questions, comments?
No questions at this time, madam.
I don't have any either. I'm okay with this. I like whenever we switch to RU4. So.
I, I, I just want to thank you all for initiating this because in the past, each one of these peoples had to come to us individually. And that's expensive for them, time consuming for us. So we saw the need as the development department and decided to pursue it. So thank you for that. Any other comments, questions? We do have a motion and a second. I will close the public hearing and check one more time to see if you have any comments for the record. Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and so ordered. Now we begin with the action items. Item number five, to approve a grant. So do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve Arizona Department of Administration, ADOA, election security grant award for ballot fraud countermeasures in the amount of $1 million.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Mr. Stevens, if you would come up and explain to us what this is all about. Normally when people, when departments or individuals apply for grants, you know, we get to see the grant, what they're asking for. That has not been provided to me, so.
You're right, Madam Chair, that is forthcoming. As soon as I get it from ADOA, I'll get it to you.
Well, I just think it's kind of, I, I'll have to tell you right up front. It's been my procedure. I need to know the details before I vote on something.
Totally agree, totally agree. My first grant, look, learning the process. So I'll take the full hit on not getting to you in time. But I can go ahead and explain what it's about.
I wish you would.
Okay, it's roughly a six month timeframe. They're looking for a final report at the end of May. There's basically three procedures of this. And that is the countermeasures you could put in the ballot paper itself when the paper is being created. There is a ballot measures you could put on the paper when it's being printed along with the ballot. And then will the tabulation machines be affected with the countermeasures in it? The RFP has not been drafted yet, that's in the works also. So there's been no approval of expenditures of money either. So if you have any questions, I'm available here.
Do others of you have questions or concerns as I do? I, I really hesitate to approve a grant and I'm not exactly sure how we can fulfill it or what it's for. Any, any comments from the other board members?
I'm somewhat familiar with the technology from a previous presentation. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I, I'm familiar with the, the grant fund that it was asked that, that he's accessing and I know quite a bit about it through talking to my state legislators. And I'm, I'm not particularly worried that it's kind of in the works. So I, I'm and, and the explanation was pretty good. I really don't have any questions.
Well, the reason I ask is in the past, when federal money, and that's what this is, it flowed to the Department of Administration. Two board members decided not to take federal funds.
Well, actually, Madam Chair, state funds. It was in the state budget.
State funds.
But through ADOA, the state funds came from the federal government, right?
No, the funds came from the state budget that the justice authorized this year. It was open to all 15 recorders and the other 14 applied for. So I did.
And Madam Chair, I, I was aware of this being written into the state budget and have had discussions about it in the state budget. It was part of the budget bill.
Okay, I have speaker request forms. The first one is Kamara Birch. Just read names in opposition to the item. The next one is Carol A. Garnett. Is that person available, online, in person? I, I guess, just read the name as Carol Garnett being opposed. Carolyn Harris.
I came here today to speak, Carolyn Harris, Bisbee, Arizona. I was trying, I was confused. I was, I've been thinking, why is a hand count so important? If there's going to be a million dollars available to check for fraud. That is a lot of money. Now I learned it's not taxpayer money. It's actually a grant, but we know somewhere down the line, even if it comes from the state, that's taxpayer money. So I just want to let the board know that these shenanigans caused me to continue to be concerned for our democracy. Thank you.
Okay, the next person is Joy Banks.
Good morning. My name is Joy Banks and I live in the unincorporated county, Cochise County. And item five caught my eye simply because I've never heard of this. I had to look up the Arizona Department of Administration and indeed see that, yes, this is a legitimate grant from the state legislature. And now that Mr. Stevens has said that he was the only one that applied, I understand why the full amount was given to him. However, again, there are sketchy details as Chair English has, has said. I'm, I'm uncomfortable with this whole thing. It's like a million dollars is a lot of money. Is that for his staff? Is he in charge of the paper that is used? I am, I'm actually kind of confused on the role of the county recorder versus the elections department versus what the Board of Supervisors can authorize or not authorize. I mean, this is kind of throwing things into a, a little bit of a confusion, confusing state right before an election. And I just, I don't understand what this is for. And I, I would highly recommend you oppose this simply until there is more information. Why, I guess it has to be approved within a certain timeframe or the grant falls away, but there is not enough information. And Mr. Stevens cannot even provide it today on the day it's being voted on. I find that really concerning. I want to know how much staff time it's going to take. How many hours is it going to take? What, what are the parameters for spending this money? Um, I'm, I would like to know. And tabulation machines. And who's in charge of, of using the machines? Is it the elections department? Is it the county recorder? I have heard talk that there is a move to make the county recorders that they are the head of elections in every county. That could be speculation, don't know. Anyway, I, I highly recommend that Ms. Judd and Mr. Crosby vote to not approve this. And Ms. English, thank you.
Okay, that's the, the last of the people who wish to speak on item number five. And I'll, I'll have to say to Mr. Stevens, I think you have a limited staff. And I'm not sure how this can be accomplished through you. I'm not sure if you expect to hire more, not seeing the grant again. You know, I'm, I'm a person for details. I like the details before I make decisions. And so I'm going to have to vote against this until I can be shown that we have the capacity because it is going through the Board of Supervisors. So that means that if it is approved, I've got my signature on it.
No, totally agree. There will be no staff hirings for this. The RFP is going to go out. The, the bulk of the money will be the purchase of the paper. So because, if you understand, they come in what they call a dandy roll and you have to order a large quantity for what this test requires. It's going to go out to, to bid. The paper manufacturers will bid on what the cost of the paper will be and what they could do in the paper. It'll go out for bid for people who can print on the paper. For example, Runbeck will be bidding on the production of the paper and the printing. The tabulation will be handled by the vendors. They will not be using our equipment. They will be using their own equipment to test if this paper can actually be tabulated correctly. So there would be no, there's no impact on the elections department or the recorders other than my time doing the paperwork.
Any board members have any questions at this point? Comments?
No further comments, thank you, Madam Chair.
I have a question. So David, what is, what is your deadline for our approval of this grant? I realize the sooner you get the money, the sooner you can start. But what if, what if we extended this a couple of weeks till you had some paperwork put together?
Well, the, the official deadline is the end of May. The report has to be written and given to the legislature. The Speaker of the House will send a president by May 30th or 31st. But the production of the paper, I'd be advised, is out 13 to 14 weeks. So once the RFP goes out and they're accepted to do this, you're talking another three to four months just to get the paper. So the, the speed of this is kind of important. None of this is going to apply to this election. This is just a project to see if it's a viable option. So nothing will happen for '22, probably won't even happen for '24, but I'm not in the legislature. I don't get to make that decision. That's up to them with the report I end up filing.
Any other questions or comments before I call for the vote?
No.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes no, and so it is approved with the two votes. Now we move on to item number six, to approve an intergovernmental agreement. Do I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move we approve intergovernmental agreement, IGA, between the city of Douglas and Cochise County for building plan review inspection and engineering services effective upon approval of both entities for a one-year term with automatic one-year renewals.
I'll second it.
You have a motion and a second. Mr. Coxworth.
Uh, thank you.
Do you have capacity?
Yes, thank you again, Madam Chair. We have a number of these IGAs currently in place to assist some of the smaller jurisdictions with building plan review and inspection services for the city of Benson. We're currently doing most of their plan review for them. They do most of their own inspections. For the city of Douglas, there are times where they are requesting our assistance with inspections. Not so much plan review, but it is as requested, as needed, and also based on available resources of the county and our capacity. So this is in support of the Board's strategic objective to enter in agreements with other local government agencies to really support each other's efforts.
When we have capacity.
When we have the resources and capacity.
Any board members have any questions about this?
I have a comment, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Although my friend Chairperson English has described this exchange or one like it as a wash, I find that that is not the case. In my previous discussion of the subject of asymmetry of taxation, I noted that the benefit in this case to Ms. English's Douglas constituents comes at a disproportionately higher cost to my constituents as the larger contributors to the county tax rolls. Thus, it is another example of redistribution of wealth.
Wow. Okay. Ms. Judd, do you have any comments?
Um, I don't, I don't have a handle on Douglas as far as the community goes, but I do know that Benson and Wilcox, and I'm very familiar with the staff there. And that occasionally they do need assistance and, and why, well, I see the point about taxpayers, how they pay to the city and the county. And they should be getting the services from their city if the city is not available. And then, then I have a question. I, I understand the city does compensate the county for, for the services we do give. Is that how that works?
Uh, yes, ma'am. I should have explained that, that we do charge for our services at 70, at a rate of $75 an hour. Each IGA is different, but generally it's about $75 an hour for planning services that we provide to these communities as well as inspection services to include the travel expenses to those communities to perform these inspections.
So their county taxes are not going to this project because their city taxes are paid for this project. So they're not actually paying it double from what I understand. But I appreciate, I, I appreciate this type of thing because of the need for it. If it wasn't needed and we were just pushing ourselves on it, on the community, so I would think that was different. But they've, they've asked us to participate and they pay us to participate so to offset our costs. So I'm, I'm good with it. Thank you, though. Thanks for clarifying that.
I think it's important that we have accurate records that shows what it costs to do any particular service. And that when we do service for other agencies, other cities, we charge based on that. So I, I've always been willing to help out communities if we have extra capacity. And so I, that's always been the bottom line. We charge them. And if we have the capacity to do it, I think it's important that we, that we do that. Any other comments before I call for the vote? Hearing none, and all those in favor of approving the intergovernmental agreement with the city of Douglas and Cochise County, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all those who oppose?
Nay.
But show that one said nay. But it is so ordered because there are two votes. Item number seven, indigent defense, approve the compensation schedule fee increase. Could I have a motion on that, please, before we have discussion?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the compensation schedule fee increase for contract defense attorneys through the Indigent Defense Coordinator effective October 1st, 2022.
Second.
The motion is second. Ms. Gilman, are you speaking for the court at this point?
Actually, Madam Chair, this is Sharon Gilman Board of Supervisors and handles our contract attorney.
Is it at the request of the judge?
Not exactly.
Go ahead.
So the Indigent Defense Office Coordinator's office handles contract attorney assignments for citizens who are charged with a crime and cannot afford an attorney. And sometimes our defense counsel offices and the public defender, legal defender and legal advocate office are overloaded and unable to, or conflicted and cannot represent those individuals. So we have contract attorneys. We pay them according to a fee schedule, a compensation schedule. And that schedule has not been increased since 2014. We are experiencing quite a difficult time attracting contract attorneys because the amount we pay is not competitive with other counties in the surrounding area. We also pay their travel when they come to Cochise County. So even then, it's not an appealing venture for them. So we evaluated other counties and we proposed this increase that was attached to the agenda item. Primarily in the felony area, we are increasing our hourly rate. And this is an area where we have the most difficulty finding attorneys to represent people with felony charges. That concludes my presentation.
Okay, any board members have any questions, comments?
I would comment that defense is at the very heart of the Bill of Rights.
Any other comments?
No, thank you. I don't.
And we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and so ordered. Next item on the agenda is a report from our county administrator.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Supervisor Judge, Supervisor Crosby. Starting on November 7th through November 13th, we're going to participate with a collaboration initiative by NACO. This is a shine a light of hope and support for veterans. So a green light will be shown at our Superior Court locations in Bisbee and Colonial de Salud. This is to support our military veterans as well as to raise awareness about the unique challenges faced by many veterans and the resources that are available in the county, state and federal level to assist veterans and their families. So in addition, as a small token of our appreciation, Cochise County veterans will be gifted with a special commemora, commemora, uh, tough time this morning, commemorative green flashlight keychain at all county locations during Operation Green Light. So during November 7th through November 13th, a veteran goes to the county locations. They can receive a keychain with the green light.
Who do they ask for?
They just, uh, sorry, one second. Health department or anyone at Pride Services will have them at our front desk.
Okay.
At any locations.
We do have health departments at all of them that are open all the time. So just wanted to make sure if the newspaper picked it up, they'd know where to go. Anything else?
In addition, I wanted to shine a light on the juvenile court and the fantastic job that they've been doing lately. It's been 24 days since the last time we've had a juvenile in custody. So these are juveniles, not charges adults. These are juveniles charged with juvenile crimes. So I just wanted to shine a light on that and say a special thanks to Judge Bannon and all the team that has helped in this, which includes the county attorney's office, juvenile probation, the public defender's office, the legal advocate's office. It is a team effort to get to this and it is a remarkable feat that we've gone so long without having a juvenile in custody. So that concludes my report.
It's fantastic. Summary of current events, Supervisor Crosby?
Yeah, just a note, it looks like we may be providing free advertising for somebody up in the little upper boxes that I'm looking at on the screen, probably not appropriate. However, I did want to note that National Adoption Day is to be recognized here, November 4th, and that's another, a notice I got from Judge Bannon, and I appreciate that very much as, as, as well as her honors, other efforts that Mr. Karwachka has recognized today. That's all my comments.
Thank you for that. I was also going to recognize the, the fact that we're having National Adoption Day. And since we, since it was on the consent agenda, we didn't get to, to mention that. So thank you for bringing that up, Tom. I think it's an important celebration, you know, for children finding new permanent families. So we should all embrace that. Could you be a little more specific? And perhaps it's, I shouldn't ask that question, but what, I can't see anything on the screen that.
I don't know if, it, it, no big deal, we'll adjourn quick enough. It looks like we're advertising for somebody on the little, little squares here on the Zoom call.
We don't see any of that. I just wanted to follow up because we, maybe we're not seeing what you're seeing, okay?
That's fine, that's just as well.
We'll check on that. Ms. Judd, do you have any current events, comments?
Um, just that we had our first frost, so the flies and mosquitoes will be gone. And that's really important to me. I think everybody. So anyway, happy fall. Oh, the snow on the mountains too. Look at that too. That's awesome. We're really happy up here. Thank you.
Okay. Before we adjourn, next meeting is on Tuesday, November the 15th at 10:00 a.m. in the Board of Supervisors hearing room for a regular board meeting. Meeting adjourned.